Welcome everyone. And time now is five o'clock. Welcome to South King Fire Board Fire Commissioners Meeting, August 27th. Call to order and Pledge Allegiance will be Commissioner Burris. Thank you. Item number three, we have an approval minutes for the regular meeting on July 25th, 2024, and special meetings on August 12th, 2024, and August 21st, 2024. Motion.
I move to pass the minutes.
Motion by Commissioner Burris or a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Gates. Any other discussion on that? During seeing none, all those favor approval of the minutes for meeting on July 25th and August 12th and August 21st. It's a good vibe right saying aye.
Aye.
We have approval. Thank you. Commissional comments. I'm going to start on my left. Commissioner Burris.
No comments at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Vodino?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Gates? Thank you. Just to continue on from our last meeting, thank you everyone that worked on the FBC. I didn't have a chance to say that. And now that I know it has been validated and approved, thank you very much for all the hard work. Very, very appreciated. Item number five, public comments. If anyone in public comments, please state your name and address for the record and limit comments to three minutes or less. Yes, please. Well, do we have one? Sorry. Gotta get a mic. Gotta get your mic. When you get your mic? There you go. Test. Hello? Oh, there you go. Ed Rickert, driver engineer at Station 64. I live in Tacoma, Washington. I would just like to thank the commissioners for meeting with representatives from the organized workforce of South King Fire last week. We are a workforce that cares about the quality of service that we provide for our community. And I think it's important that our collective voice is heard by the elective leadership of our department. This is important not just because it supports the interests of our members, but also because it supports the wellness of our department. And I hope that we can go forward and continue these communications in an effort to collaboratively work towards better labor relations and a better future for our department. Thank you. Thank you, Ed. You have the comments? Okay, we're gonna move on. Commissioner Committee reports, item number six.
Okay, so the Policy and Procedure Committee met, and we have a new proposal for station visit policies that you all should have. And the difference, based on the conversation the last time was who would schedule them. And right now, we changed it to the chief or his designee. That was his idea. And that way he can designate somebody else if needed, but he has to approve them anyway. So that's the only change.
Any questions? Commissioner Burris?
You knew I'd have a couple. So we've heard numerous times from the chief that this isn't really a policy he requested or anything. He's just going through what the, what legal has advised him to do. Couple little minor things about how it will work. Is there any kind of a timeframe? If I, if I choose to send the chief an email saying, hey, I'd like to go visit 65A next Thursday, and I don't hear anything back for a while, and for even longer. I mean, the chief's a busy guy. I can see why it wouldn't be the top of his priority list. Or let's say, we do eventually come up with a time, and something happens, and there's no representative from an administration there. Do we start all over? Is it okay to go ahead and proceed with the visit? What do we do about that?
The policy says schedule within seven days. So I would hope you'd hear back by then. But it says, or his designee, if he's busy, he can designate somebody else.
It says that all visits will be scheduled a minimum of seven days in advance, but there's no maximum.
Correct.
And that's my question is, do we need a, hey, you gotta arrange it within two weeks or a month or something like that? Because it would be, it would be one of those things that is really easy to just never makes it up to the top of your pile of things to do that day.
Lori will probably be in that loop. And based on how she handles things, I don't think you will get into a situation that you won't hear something back within a day or so. And I, I think I can almost guarantee that. Right?
I might have thought we were trying to not add Lori's workload.
So she was in our committee meeting, and we did discuss this. And that's where we said, or his designee, so we can change who that contact is if we need to, if the workload gets to a point that we can't do that.
Then if I could get a definition, commissioners will not engage in conversations that undermine the responsibility of the fire chief or executive leadership team. What does that really mean? I mean, that's a, that's a really vague, squishy term that is opinion-based? Can you give me a definition?
I think any language we use will be up for interpretation. Though I think that somewhat covers possible situations, but we could make it more specific if you would like.
I don't know that it can be made more specific. It's.
All right. I think we're dealing with chain of command. And that's something we're all familiar with. And if something comes up that is really within the responsibility of somebody that's an officer or staff that is their purview, I don't think, I think those are the things that fall into that. We can make that clear. But I think it's implied by this chain of command that we wouldn't do that.
I think the policy assumes that commissioners will use their discretion.
Anyone else? I just have a couple. I'll comment and then. So I know that we had discussed about the Monday through Friday. What kind of discussion did you have at all on that?
I believe that was related to work hours in the contract.
Okay. Because again, it's just eliminate some of the folks that do work still in the commission? And they're able to do that Monday through Friday? Just a, just a comment. And then the other, the only other one is the bottom line there. It's giving me the last sentence. I'm not sure that the first sentence of that first paragraph should be in there, since it's a policy. I don't mind the second sentence, but the first sentence as it reads.
Which paragraph?
The last paragraph.
Oh, the counsel?
Right.
That was just meant to be somewhat of a disclaimer.
Okay. So I guess for purposes for policies, should that be included in policy? That's the question that I have.
I think it's important information.
Because we already established that it's, it is a reminder to fire station and its perception by, I know what people talk about. But then again, it's not against RCW for us to visit. So that's why I'm asking about that. That's it. If it's going to moralize in a policy, then it's going to be in there for a while. That's just my only question.
I think one of the items we discussed is maybe a, an example, but not a real major example, is somebody said, we, we really need a new coffee pot. And we, as commissioners, we aren't going to commit to, that you're going to get a new coffee pot. But we will suggest that as that, as you, have you discussed that with the, the station captain? And as, as the chain of command example?
Well, like I said, I don't, I don't mind the second sentence, but I'm not sure the first sentence is being there. If you want to, if anyone wants to talk about that, or you want to just go with this? I mean, we have to, it's now going to be September. We still haven't had any station visits.
And Chair, I apologize. I still haven't gotten all the Robert's down. There's more I want to say.
Oh, sorry.
Those are just questions. Is now the right time to say it? Or?
You have questions or? Go ahead.
It's comments. Before it was questions.
Go ahead.
Now it's comments. And get comfortable, please. You, you know how I feel about some of this. I've talked in the past about. This rule implies the only people that can be trusted in this department is management. And I think that that's, that's kind of, I don't care for that. If we were to apply all the principles that we are applying, that says this policy is needed, well, then we should also include that anytime administration and committee and commissioners talk, there should be a representative from, from labor. The rules are exactly the same on what we are allowed to talk about and what we're not allowed to talk about. And if we don't go full bore, well, then, you know, if you put on your critical thinking cap, it says that the only people that can be trusted in the department is management. I object to that. Mr. Quinn, you've, in the past, when you and I have talked about this, you say it's necessary to protect the department. You've talked about how everybody's lawsuit happy now and stuff like that. So it's to protect the department. Between you and your father, you've been representing our department for a very long time. Can you tell us what we are protecting ourselves against? Can you give me an example of what, what is the worst thing that's happened to a fire department that would have been prevented had they a policy like that that required supervised, supervised visits? That's just a real life example.
Sure. The worst example I can think of. Well, policies like this are designed to prevent a game of telephone, wherein a commissioner arrives at the station, develops substantial rapport with individuals on the line to discuss operational matters. That commissioner, without consulting with the chief or consulting with the board, anybody, goes on and makes a commitment that we're going to hire additional staff. That's an example off the top of my head. There's many, but that's an example off the top of my head. Where a commissioner makes an explicit commitment to someone on the line that the board and the department is going to do a specific thing. What did that result in? Months and months of grievances? Months and months of even picketing and disparagement of management and the entire board of commissioners? Because one commissioner went off half-cocked and made a commitment? Does that mean that anybody on this board is going to do something like that? No. But policies like this have been implemented in the past to prevent something like that from happening. That's an example.
And why is it that we waited until 2024 to, to make this thing a big deal? I mean, it was never, I don't think it was ever discussed before. And I mean, like I said, you, you've been representing this department for a very long time. And why all of a sudden now versus last year or five years ago?
Well, not to give you a lawyerly answer, but what I would say is that I tend not to answer legal questions or policy questions until I'm asked to answer them. So I don't come to the board and say, these are all of the policies that you should have. I address issues as they arise. And I was asked the question now, in 2024, and I gave an answer now. I don't think the question had been asked of me before, otherwise I would have answered it.
An example is, in my first couple of years, I think it was in, within my first year, I visited the station and got caught in a situation where I was shown a bunch of outdated equipment. Inappropriate old equipment, not suited for the, for the job. I really listened to them and I did commit that I'd take it on up the, up the chain of command. And that was a mistake, because there were some assumptions that something was going to happen. And that's the kind of thing that happens if you don't have a policy in place.
But was that Station 61 regarding a rig to haul the hazmat trailer?
Yes.
So I would say that actually resulted in something really good. We paid out a lot of money.
Six years later, yes.
We paid out a lot of money because we didn't have the trailer.
I'm not going to say when, you know, whether that was a good idea or not, and whether it happened in a timely fashion.
I'm just saying, I think that was a good result.
The commissioners have already talked. And with previous leadership, you know, we really need one. But financially, we didn't have the wherewithal to do it. That's an example of when I, if I had a policy to go by, I would not have made the commitment that I did. Because I didn't either, either have the money or the authority to make that commitment.
And I would agree. You never commit. But running it up the flag is not a bad idea at all. I don't think that's harmful. These are all small things. From the first time this policy came up, there's been one thing in my head that is like, this is why it's bad policy. I was hoping some of these other things could convince two other commissioners to say, no, it's not a good idea. I haven't brought this up because it, it involves a dark time in our department's history. But those who don't learn from history are doomed to repeat. And I feel we're repeating here a little bit. And so I have to talk about Chief Gaspar. As look around the room, it's probably about half of the people know that story. For those that don't, we had an individual, Chief Gaspar. I think you could make the argument he was second in command, maybe third, in charge of a lot of stuff. And over the course of somewhere around 10 years, he managed to embezzle right around a million dollars from this department. Now, there's nobody that knows more about this than Director Ganem. If you think I'm wrong, please type in. How did he do it? How does somebody manage to steal a million dollars from the department and get away with it for so long before he got caught? I would argue, Joe, if you disagree, speak up. He was in charge of too much information with no checks and balances. Would you agree with that, Joe?
I would agree.
So if we keep in mind checks and balances here. In your Commissioner 101 classes, you, you, you compare the structure of a fire department to the structure of the federal government. There's three separate branches. Now, in fairness to you, I don't think you ever mentioned anything about checks and balances. But I would argue that we as commissioners serve a check and balance as part of our job, part of our function. We, we, we vote on resolutions. We, we pass the budget. That's a check and balance. If, if we get a budget brought to us where the chief gets a Ferrari to take home every night, we're going to say no. That's, it's a check and balance on what's going on. Station visits, I know it doesn't say that in this policy, but station visits are a check and balance. We have a lot of opportunity to speak with, with administration. We really have none to speak with labor. And I'm not saying this administration, but what happens if the next administration is maybe lacking in ethics? And let's face it, people, we are on our fourth administration in less than five years. I mean, that's, we don't know what's going to happen with the next administration that we have. Maybe we make a mistake. And it's, it's an ethically challenged administration. Station visits are the way we find out if what we're being told is the whole story. And that's part of our job is, is to provide a check and balance. And if, if all we do is get all of our information from one or two people, and we do not verify that in any way, which this policy makes it pretty impossible to verify anything. You know, who's going to say, oh, no, actually, the chief has done this when the chief is standing there? I mean, there is just, there are some people that will, that will talk, but I don't blame anybody who's, who's new or, or in a promotional process or anything like that. They're going to keep their mouths shut because they don't want negative ramifications that could happen if you had a chief that was that way. So I believe by limiting our ability to, you know, trust, but verify, if we eliminate our ability to be a check and balance, which I believe is a, is one of the biggest functions of being a commissioner, I think we are just like, we're abdicating our responsibilities. We're not doing our job. And.
Don't we hire a chief based upon ethics and a pretty strong vetting of, of the qualifications? And that is the responsibility of the commissioners. There is a Joint Labor Management Committee that meets monthly, that is an open forum to, to discuss the issues like that. I would assume that if there's something going on, the leadership of the union would be apprised of it and would know it and would bring it to that committee. That's a forum for, for discussing it.
I somewhat agree with.
That commissioners are involved in. There are two commissioners at that meeting.
I would somewhat agree with your first, with your second statement. But Chief Gaspar was vetted and vetted and vetted. And he was smart enough to get away with it, you know? So, you know, if the worst thing that happens, if we don't have a policy, is a commissioner promises something that they never should have promised, if we weigh that versus we're clueless to what's really going on, and then it suddenly blows up, and it blows up because we weren't paying attention. We weren't, we weren't doing our job. That's, that's my feeling. That's all.
Commissioner Vodino?
I do want it to be clear that I'm, I had asked Eric the question because I wanted to visit stations. That's why this came up. I wasn't expecting his answer.
Oh, and I meant to say this. So several months ago, I talked to Director Ganem, and I asked him the question, hey, what have we done to make sure that nothing like what happened with Chief Gaspar happens again? And he gave me a very long, very detailed explanation of what they've done, which involves separating information and checks and balances. And I am absolutely 100% sure that, that what you have done, that'll never happen again. I don't want to imply that it ever could happen again.
So what we have again is a policy is sitting out there. And I think you're green solid right now. Commissioner Gates?
Yeah, a couple of comments. First of all, to close the loop on, on Chief Gaspar, I think what he took, what he took was about $750,000. And we got every dime back. Now, we never knew that we were missing the $750,000. So when we got the $750,000 returned to us, that was a great deal for the budget. I mean, that was, you know, we didn't know we were missing it. And here comes a nice addition to the budget that year. But we did get every dime back, and we got most of our expenses back for the attorney's fees. And we're not going to get any more back because he died. So he was, he was, he was having to pay monthly. On the station visit policy, I'm going to vote against it. And I'll tell you why. If I go back to the, to the memo that the chief wrote on February 21st to all the commissioners. He, he talked to, the chief talked to almost all of the Zone 3 fire chiefs, and no other agency presently allows commissioners to conduct station visits. Most of my peers were very surprised that commissioners would visit stations, et cetera, et cetera. So the fact that all of those chiefs, all of those agencies that he talked to don't allow them, plus the fact that as our, as our legal counsel put it, legally, we can do it, but that doesn't mean we should. And so I know we've got a couple, a couple commissioners here that really think this is the way to go. But I have a hard time believing that our attorney in those Zone 3 fire chiefs are wrong in their thinking.
Thank you, Commissioner Gates. Commissioner Vodino, do you want to, I think you want to comment?
At this point, we probably should send this back to committee.
Like I said, it's been, it's now coming up on September. So if you want to send it back again, I don't know what that's going to accomplish at some point. But if you want one more month?
I think we've heard information that we should process. And thank you.
Yeah, I would very much like to get this passed, but that's a lot of information that we didn't have before.
And we're taking it back to your, thank you. Do you have one more?
Yes, you requested more on a culture and engagement committee. So we looked at, I believe, your proposal from a couple of months ago on the duties of that committee. And we edited them a little bit so they wouldn't overlap with the staff of the district.
I looked at it, and I really see anything in it, problems with it. So any other comments?
But could I, I think I understand, you know, what you're trying to do. But could you maybe explain, explain it in terms of, is there some particular issue out there in the community now that, that you would want to bring to the committee and to the board that needs some policy or procedures or something from the board? Have you got an example?
No, I don't, Commissioner Gates. But I think one of the things that, reason why we had Director Stevens come in, Therese come in to talk about the, the work they've done. And as we know, there hasn't been any review on it. And they're asking for also some, some input and some insight and some oversight from us. And so to give them that, that committee is just kind of there. And so to give them that, that committee is just kind of there. If you read the, uh, the language, we was just in there to say, hey, you know, we're here for you. We can help you. What do you need? I think that's what I was just, just on the idea of looking for and giving them what they need to, to help get that, that whole objective and the plan they have going that's sitting there and a jumpstart a little bit. That's all. That makes sense. Go ahead.
Yeah, we, uh, kind of wrote this because the staff already has similar groups. So this is just our input, if we would like, would be from this committee.
Mr. Fuller?
One of the things we considered was the presentation that we got from that group. And Teresa did a great job in describing what she had done and the progress she's made throughout the, pushing throughout the community. The first time we heard her, um, it was really a very top level, this is what we think we're going to do. This is what ought to be done. And the difference between that, uh, discussion and the one that she presented shows a tremendous amount of progress on, uh, on that team in, in implementing what, uh, what the program was designed to do and in particular in the, in the recruiting of new firefighters. There's also a group, uh, in the Fire Chiefs Association that is working that issue and has a classes for new recruits for people that want to apply to become a firefighter and training how to interview. And they are a part of that, uh, but that activity also, so they're well entrenched in the community and the other activities with other groups. Uh, I, I think across the county and across the state. I, um, I don't think our watch, our committee needs to be present to, to help them. They pledged to come back and tell us more.
Yeah, again, it's just, um, um, because it's been sitting there and going by what Director Stevens said, you know, he's just looking for some oversight from us to help her out. I think again, that's what the language tells. It's not more of putting the committee together, go help them or to, to, to meet with them all the time. It's more to kind of like to maybe help them getting where they want to go. If, if there's something that has to do with, uh, we, anything we can help with, basically, I was looking.
Yeah, this is, they can ask us input.
All right, that's all that's for. Commissioner Gates, did I answer your question though? So, um, do you want to, has everyone read that? Okay. So you want, go ahead.
Uh, I would like to move to approve the culture and engagement committee.
There's a motion by Commissioner Vino. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Thinking about Commissioner Gates, uh, for to approve the policy for a cultural engagement committee. Is there any discussion on the motion on the table? Hearing, seeing, and all those in favor say aye. Aye, suppose. Unanimous, thank you. We're going to move to resolution 654, authorizing issuance of bonds of the acquisition of real property.
Good evening. Uh, resolution number 654. A resolution of the Board of Fire Commissioners of South King Fire, King County, Washington, authorizing the issuance and delivery of 4,500,000 principal amount of its limited general tax obligation bonds, series 2024, to provide money to finance the acquisition of real property and improvements to be used for the district's administrative offices and construction and installation of improvements thereto, together with appropriate apparent, I can't even pronounce that word. Appropriate appliances, fixtures, equipment and furnishings to pay costs of issuing the bonds, fixing the date, terms, maturity, interest rates, form payment and redemption provisions of the bond, designating a fiscal agent pledging the district's full faith, credit and resources to the payment of the bonds, creating and adopting certain funds and providing for the deposits therein, creating to comply with federal tax law and providing for other matters properly related thereto. Adopted and approved by the Board of Fire Commissioners of South King Fire, King County, Washington, at a regular meeting thereof and held on the 26th, 27th day of August, 2024.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Hearing, now I'll take a motion.
I'll move approval of resolution 654.
Motion by Commissioner Gates, seconded by Commissioner Vino. Any discussion on the motion on the table?
Yeah. Usually council matic.
Yeah. There's these things called council manic bonds that have been, have been reclassified as such. These long-term general obligation bonds, uh, they've been called council manic bonds and they've been called this. They're the same thing.
Wasn't Joe, was there a bond rating, um, put on this bond?
Uh, Kelsey, do you know the answer to that? I don't think so.
Okay.
You have the questions? Again, uh, motion for Commissioner Gates, seconded by Commissioner Vino. Hearing, seeing, and all those favors say aye. Aye, all suppose, none, unanimous, thank you. Audit number eight, administrative team report.
The commissioners have all received in their packet, uh, this month's, uh, administrative team reports, just a couple of things to highlight. Uh, the audit was completed, clean review from the financial audit. So, uh, well done to Joe and Kelsey and the finance team. That's an important, uh, consideration for the district. And then, uh, in the highlights, you'll also see some information about a, a feel-good story from MIH, which is great to see MIH up and making a difference in the community. And then, uh, tomorrow night, we have our first cadet program meeting. We have parent orientation for the cadet program or the explorer program. So some good, some good work being done by everybody in the organization. Uh, I'd ans, I would answer any questions at this point?
Just a comment, as I usually say, it's, it's a great report, but it also, uh, shows the progress that people are making on and have made on the, uh, transition. And we'll be ready very soon to develop a strategic plan because we've, uh, we've completed the, the four legs of the, of that interim plan. People are getting a lot done and it's, it's meaningful stuff.
Thank you. We appreciate that feedback. Uh, before we jump into the 2024 staffing, um, just a heads up for the commissioners as part of staff report. We do have, uh, WSRB has reached out to us as it relates to uh, our rerate. So we'll be reaching out to WSRB to schedule a visit in May. And then we'll be putting a team together to coordinate with WSRB. We're going to be slightly intentional in our team because, uh, some of us have gone through this and some of us have done WSRB ratings and some of us have not. And those of us that have probably won't be here when they come back in five years. So, um, we will be putting together a team with some intentionality behind it. And let me share my screen.
There's not a lot that we are worried about in that retaining that class two.
There should not be. We haven't had a dramatic, we haven't had a dramatic change, um, in the district. We have had an increase in call volume, which is going to impact response times. We have increased staffing, which will help a little bit. Our vehicle maintenance, uh, especially the record keeping part of it is greatly improved. Valley comm and the water districts are kind of a given, we know. And, uh, Fire Marshal Nichols and his staff have done a good job of bolstering inspections and plan review. And that's a big component of WSRB as well. So we should be able to maintain our class two rating.
Something in my mind recalls, uh, Des Moines water. Has that been resolved?
No. Uh, probably what you're referring to is the age of the infrastructure in Des Moines as it relates to still having cast iron, steel and wood pipe in the ground. And so that has not been resolved. That's between the water district and, uh, the city of Des Moines, unfortunately. We don't have a lot of pull in that arena.
Thank you.
Okay, I wanted to jump in and talk about, we have, we have talked to the commissioners during our, during our, uh, tie-ins about, uh, being over budget for operational overtime. And we've, we've kind of given the high level. But we really haven't sat down and presented to the board where we're at and what we're doing. And in your package, you received the memo outlining, uh, where we are. What are some of the contributing factors and, um, kind of the direction we're going to go? So real quickly, we're going to talk about the overtime budget being over projections. We're going to talk about some of the continuing, continuing factors, excuse me, contributing factors, um, as it relates to why we're there. And then we're going to talk a little bit about some of the things we've done to mitigate where we're at. So there's a lot of things that go into our overtime. Um, one of them is just PMLA. It's, there's an, there's 24 weeks of leave afforded to our individuals for a variety of reasons. And when they use those leaves, that leave often ends up resulting in overtime. So if, um, somebody has something going on in their life, they have a baby, they have a sick family member. Heaven forbid they have an illness in their family. They can use that leave, which is totally appropriate and, and we value the fact that they have that leave, but it does create a, a, some pressure on staffing because that person's not here for an extended period of time. Uh, our sick leave usage is incorporated in that. We have, people have the availability to call in sick and that sick leave often generates overtime needs. And that contributes to it. Part of that sick leave use, part of the contributing factors is on the administration. For a very long period of time, multiple years, we haven't really, uh, addressed when we are using sick leave, if there's a pattern. So as an example, if we're calling in sick repeatedly on debit days, that's a pattern of sick leave use that we probably should talk about. We staff above 29 and there's a variety of reasons for that. We staff above 29 and when we staff above 29, that creates overtime. 29 being our minimum. We have backfill for training demands. We have backfill for instructors that we have to pay. We have to pay overtime for those individuals when they're off duty to, uh, classes and different things. The tenure of our department, we're very young. Telestaff, we're working very hard to refine telestaff. So right now, if you came to me and said, how much money do we pay to provide services as it relates to having the big red fire engine go down the road? We would have to do a pretty deep dive into the data to sort pay codes to be able to say, this is how much it costs to provide specifically keeping all of our apparatus in service. And then there is an element of not everybody in the organization feels that sick leave use is a problem. Or that the use of leave is a problem or the use of, of unprotected leave as an impact to the organization. We understand that. But it is one of those things that is impacting, uh, our ability to, to spend money. So some of the things that drive overtime, and, or some of the things that the impacts of the overtime is our firefighters are getting worn down. Our firefighters get worn down because they're working more shifts to cover vacancies. And those vacancies then create fatigue and that fatigue could lead to another vacancy. It can lead to an injury. It leads to low morale. It has all kinds of negative implications for our staff. And so the other, another consideration is that when we create that much more pressure on our firefighters and we impact fatigue and wellness and morale, they're not happy at home. And that's not okay, right? They should be going home happy and ready to engage with their families and ready to, to be a contributing member of their, their family group. And that, that is diminished when they're overworked and fatigued. And quite frankly, thinking back to my days online, no one really likes to think they're going home at eight o'clock in the morning or 7:30 in the morning and then get told at 6:30, no, you're not going home. And you're going to be here for another 24 hours because of mandatory overtime. Those are all negative impacts to our staff. It impacts our adaptability. So our adaptability to, to, to change and go a different direction or impact, impact, impart, excuse me, different strategies is limited. Our sick leave alone, just covering sick leave is costing us about a million dollars. And we're going to spend a little bit more than a million dollars this year on just sick leave. And the reason we broke it out is because protected leave is protected leave. So military leave, disability, family leave, FMLA. That is a system that's there. That is a system that's there to protect our employees and we value and respect that program. The only thing we can really influence is the discretionary use of sick leave, the discretionary use of time. So, um, that's one of the reasons why in your packet, you'll see the breakdown of, you know, we're averaging about nine, eight, between eight and nine shifts of use of sick leave per firefighter per year. Because that's really the only thing we have control over. So if we can reduce that a little bit and decrease the amount of money we're spending on, on overtime just to cover sick leave, then we have a little more adaptability. We have the ability to spend that money on wellness. We have that ability to, to spend it on different ideas or different programs to help the organization. Another component to it is our staffing model is not really that effective right now. And I say that from a standpoint of the tenure of our fire departments. So 28% of our fire department is currently JATC. So that means three years or less working through their JATC steps. Take that out one step farther, 34% of our department's been here for less than five years. So we have a pretty young workforce. And that is, that reflects in what they're able to do and how much they're able to work without supervision. But it also is reflective in the fact that we have a lot of individuals that are using protected leave because we have a lot of people that are starting their families. We have young employees and they're having, they're having babies and starting families. And so there has been a spike in the use of leave because of childbirth. And that, again, that's a, it's a fact of life. It is what happens, but it impacts us. So then the other part of this is that because we, we have a staffing model that's fairly rigid and because we don't really have a lot of wiggle room financially to do something different, our staffing, our added staffing hasn't completely mitigated our overtime use. So we've increased staffing, but our overtime has gone up at a greater rate, if that makes sense. And there's this graph right here. So if you look at the, if you look at staffing, um, when I started in 2022, we were at 34. Now we're up to 36 and a half. But if you compare that staffing line to overtime on the right-hand side, or excuse me, probably, yeah, still your right-hand side, the, the green and the blue line, our staffing's gone up, but our, our overtime need has gone up exponentially. And what that tells me is that while we have people on duty, for whatever reason, we don't have the right qualifications or our system is structured in such a way that it might be working against us. So that's one of the implications of having a young fire department and having people within JATC and not being able to completely work without supervision and be in the right-hand seat. Even though we've added bodies, we haven't lessened the demand any. And that's really the key. We're not, we're not actually accomplishing the goal of decreasing the demand on our firefighters so that they're not having to work so much overtime and so they're not going on so many calls per shift. So we met, um, back in May, we met and as an admin team and we were able to do a few things to help mitigate the impact of being over in overtime. So we've adjusted some of, some of what we pay backfill and mandatory and overtime for, for training. We've adjusted that. We've limited our expenses to those mission critical things that we know we have to have. And those things that we might want to have or those things that might be nice to have, we're going to wait a little while till the end of the year, see where we're at before we make some, a couple of large purchases. We're working on refining telestaff codes so that things get, um, we can give greater detail to the board, but also making sure that things are coded appropriately. Sometimes, you know, I went to this training and that was, I got coded as this, but it should have been that. So we're making sure that that's, that's in place and working with, uh, the ERC, the Employee Resource Centers to make sure our, our approval process for training is better and is tracking those expenses and that we're approving them ahead of time. So we know what's going on. We've asked the battalion chiefs to put notes in overtime so that we have a better understanding of why somebody is working overtime. We've asked the battalion chiefs to put notes in overtime so that we have a better understanding of why somebody is working overtime. Oftentimes you'll see a name and it'll, it'll say backfill four and it'll tell you who they're working for, but it doesn't tell you why that person is gone. So if there's something going on that we need to know about, we're asking the battalion chiefs to just put a note in telestaff so that we can capture that data and understand what's going on. We have some vacant positions that we're not filling. We're using that salary savings to offset overtime. And I know that that's slightly counterintuitive because you feel like if you had more people, you'd have less overtime. But in reality, we've proven or we've shown that we're not really getting the desired outcome by having more people. And there's always a breakover point in every organization where it's a little bit more cost effective to pay overtime than it is to hire based on benefits and some of that other stuff. So we're going to hold some over, some vacancies. We're going to hold some positions vacant till the end of the year and then start the process of filling them. We've been talking with the local. We had a meeting in July. We're working on scheduling another meeting so that we can keep having this conversation and see if we can find ways, see if we can find ways to, to mitigate some of the impacts that we're, we're facing. Our structure is such that when we have a vacancy, we can't, we can't hire a temp, right? You can't go, there's no temp firefighter agency. You can't go hire a temporary firefighter and, and so, you know, talking to the union about how do we, how do we come up with some creative solutions to, to encourage folks to be here and/or just to find ways to fill vacancies in a, in a better fashion? So one of the things that we'll be looking at long-term that we, we will be talking to the union with is can we have a, a peak hours car? Can we do something between seven thirty in the morning and, and seven thirty at night or on twelves or tens? Is there something we can do on a, on a day basis to add a resource? If we can add a resource during our busiest days and our busiest hours and free up the crews to get training done, take some pressure off the crews from a response point of view, add a resource within the system, the BCS can move around to fill holes, that might be as good or better than always having to backfill an engine company for overtime or things like that. We're talking to the, to the local about patterns of sick leave and, and we're engaging with those individuals that call in sick on debit days or those individuals that call in sick on trades. If there's not a, you know, if there's a pattern there, we're engaging with those individuals. And I'm happy to say that has actually worked. We've seen a decrease in debit days and sick leave on trades. And we actually have folks that have dramatically increased their sick leave balances in the last two months or three months. We're working very hard on, on telestaff. I do want to get some long-term health and wellness programs in place to help our firefighters with fatigue, to help our firefighters with burnout and, and some of the byproduct of being so busy. We're having regular policy reviews and, and part of that policy review is talking and collaborating with the local. This is what we're seeing. This is what we're thinking. How do you see it? How can, how can you support us? How can we support you? I will say that our sick leave use is not unique to us. Departments all across King County are, are in the same situation. The one thing that is unique to us is that we are three to four shifts above the average for the rest of King County. So talking to my peers within King County, the average is roughly five to five and a half shifts per firefighter. We're at nine shifts per person. So we're not asking the board for any action. We've, we have Director Ganem and I and, and finance have talked extensively about options. We believe we can, with the, with the steps we put in place and monitoring the budget a little, a little closer that we can make it to the end of the year without going over budget. And we don't need to do a budget amendment, which is quite a process to do a budget amendment with King, with King County. So we are, we're in a position where we can continue to operate as we are. We're in a position where we can continue to, to remain on budget. But if that changes, we'll be coming back to the board and saying, hey, we need to go in a different direction and we want you to have an opportunity to know what's going on and ask questions. So we're not asking for any direct action tonight. So any questions from the board?
Mr. Fuller?
It looks like a good plan. There's the right people involved, particularly the, the union, management, looking at all aspects of the problem and looking for a creative solution. You can't do anything more than that to, to attack a problem that has a big budget impact and, and some issues that have personal impact. So I think to me, it sounds like a good plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Burris?
One line was, was holding some vacant positions.
Yes.
Can you explain which maybe?
So because we have a couple of firefighters that didn't pass the academy, we have some vacant firefighter positions. We're going to use that salary savings and use it for overtime. So
Perfect.
And that, there's, there's some behind the scenes in that, in that last year, we created a hiring plan so that we could have some predictability in our hiring structure and HR could plan and logistics could plan and everybody knew what the expectations were. So that, when, by doing that, that puts us in a position we can advertise in January, February, March, we can test, we can interview, we can hire, we can get them into the academy. And it's not this rush job of, oh my gosh, we've got three months to hire somebody and get a background check and a medical screening and get them bunker gear and get them uniforms because that's not enough time anymore. So that, that also supports another very strategic hiring plan to create a system where everybody knows what's expected and we know the workflow. So that when we have vacancies and we identify them, we can hire and get them in the academy. The, the sad part is, is that we, I convinced Director Ganem to fund two extra positions and two positions failed the academy. So yeah, at least we maintained the eight that was the target. We just lost the two extras.
Happens.
Chief, when your DSH folks, are they able to go on shift they needed to?
If we needed to pull them back to shift, we could. I would be willing to bet without even looking at Fire Marshal Nichols, he might cringe a little bit at the workload that the Fire Marshal's office currently has in front of them. They're very busy. To, and to be honest, if we had to, we could. We've done it in the past. There may be a ramp up period to give them an opportunity to train, but you could do it. We could pull people back from the training consortium as well. There's a financial impact to that because we get, we get credit on our, on our tuition. We get credited on our bill with the training consortium for those positions. And those positions would help a little bit, but they're also almost all officer positions. It's Lieutenant Hanks, Lieutenant Brooks, Lieutenant Smith, Tanya is a lieutenant. So we, we would bring back officers, which may or may not alleviate the problem.
Right. Just wondering, thinking about it, you know, because it's always, you're going to come with some ways, I know. And just created ways to be able to maybe staff for 12 hours, something like that, right?
Yes, it would be, it would be great to have, you know, ultimately it would be nice to have an engine and an aid car Monday through Thursday. Our busiest day of the week is Monday. So it'd be nice to have an aid car Monday and an engine Monday through Thursday. They could cover, they could help go on calls, they could. So we'll continue to have those conversations. It, it's something that the organization's going to need to weigh in on as a whole because it is a change. And, you know, ideally it would be stopgap. It would be, we would do this until we got a new station and we would roll those units into another station. So other agencies have done it. It's been successful. There's still a couple of departments around that still have day units. The other part of it is, you know, that we talked about the youth of our department and 28% are in JATC. That JATC and hiring process brings with it its own workload because our, our firefighters were out here all day to day doing JATC training, preparing for JATC tests. So that creates a workload for the crews that then competes with their own training. It competes with their ability to recover. It competes with call volume. And then there's a financial burden because those individuals have expectations to go to the pump academy, to become drivers, to do other things. And now, you know, in a, in a perfect world with a measured hiring plan that started a few years ago, we would not have potentially, you know, eight or 12 individuals that all want to go to the pump academy at the same time that we can't support because there's not enough spots, there's not enough money, there's not enough whatever. So there are some downstream implications that we are attempting to fix by hiring, having a set hiring plan, knowing what we're going to do and when we're going to do it.
Thank you. You have any questions?
We have a big department and we're going through a lot of change. We're going through a lot of challenges. And this kind of process that cuts across the whole department is, is, I'm encouraged. So this is how we ought to attack big problems. This one isn't a crisis, but it's one we need to address and find the, the long-term solution. And I'm looking forward to when other ones like that come up and we do the same thing.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Chief. Audit number nine, August budget.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. We are now eight months through the year and we are trending rather well. Last month, we reported out that we were about a half a percent over budget and that was due to processing the new contract for the firefighters and the retro pay that accompanied that. And that put us over budget through July. Excuse me. The administrative team through Chief M. Vulcanberg has reviewed every divisional budget and put an emphasis on making sure that we're sticking to our budget as much, as much as possible. And things leveled out this month. Happy to report this time of the year, we would be looking at a target percentage of 66.67% and we are at 66.57. So we are a tenth of a percent under budget. So things are leveling out and we'll continue to monitor it and report it. But so far, happy with our progress. And tonight, Finance Supervisor Kelsey Barrett is here with the particulars.
All right. This month we have mid-month utilities totaling $42,945.70. Accounts payable warrants totaling $1,348,707.76. Payroll direct deposit totaling $1,635,276.60. Our payroll taxes totaling $349,343.73. And then our medical claims process as of August 20th totaling $298,519.39 for a total approval of $3,674,793.18.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
I move to approve the vouchers.
There's a motion on approval of vouchers by Commissioner Medina. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Burris. Any discussion on motion? Hearing, seeing that, all those in favor of approval of vouchers, say aye? Aye. Close. Position. Thank you. We have approval. Audit number 11. The board adjourned its executive session to discuss attorney-client privilege matters per 42.30.1101I. Discuss a legal counsel representing the agency matters related to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which agency the governing body or a member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussions likely result in adverse legal or financial consequences to the agency. Action may or not be, may or may not be taken after executive session. Joining the board in the executive session would be Executive Secretary Perry and legal counsel. At this time, we're recessed for two minutes to get everyone transferred into executive session. We anticipate the next session lasting for 30 minutes. Action may or may not be taken after executive, executive session. At the end of executive session, we're taking two-minute recess to get everyone transferred back over to the special meeting.